Okay, I'm calling the Committee of the Hall meeting for Friday, February, Monday, February the 13th, 2017 to order. And I'll begin as usual by asking Counselor Darling, who's filling in for Deputy Mayor Henderson tonight, if there are any additions to the agenda.
There are no additions to the agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest from members of council tonight? Seeing none, Mr. Davey, we can proceed.
Your worship, the first item on the agenda tonight is presentations, and we have a presentation from James Coburn to Coburn Council for his 198th birthday celebrations.
Welcome, James.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening, council, your worship, directors, CAO Peacock. Lovely to see you all tonight. I just wanted to say, for someone who's 198, I feel pretty good for being a dead guy. To see 120 kids here this morning, from CR Gomo, Northumberland Christian School, Terry Fox School, Burnham Public School, and the Montessori School, to fill the courtroom with young people, learning a little bit about Confederation timeframe here in Coburg, and what Victorian life would have been like was a fantastic opportunity here this morning. Yes, I know they made a lot of noise up and down the stairs over top of the Finance Department. Yes, I know the building maintenance manager may give me grief over the wood shavings that are up and down the staircase from the paddle carver we had here this morning, in his voyageur costume. But I think the little bit of extra effort on behalf of Victoria Hall staff is well worth a wonderful celebration, and our future leaders learning a little bit about the history of Confederation, and what it means to be a Coburgian, and who James Coburn was. I've also had the pleasure as well of introducing these 120 young people to the First Speaker of the House of Commons Chair, which is on temporary loan from the federal government, arrived Thursday afternoon, was uncrated, put into the room, and today was its first formal visit from these 120 young people. And it was fantastic to see them, to teach them a little bit about Confederation, what a Speaker of the House of Commons does, and how important that was that that speaker came from Coburg, and what an important piece of history it was with the formation of our wonderful country, and how important it is to be Canadian. The chair's on temporary loan until probably the middle of September, so it will take, I think, a central place in a number of our celebrations for the 150th anniversary of Confederation this year. Certainly, I know I plan on sitting around it, because you can't sit in it, obviously. A wonderful piece of that history, it's very limited in terms of how much it can be touched or moved, as part of those significant events that we've got coming up this year. Things like the Canada Day, Canada Day Week festivities, obviously for Coburn Day, part of the Civic Long Weekend, and other activities. We're doing a new insert, actually, to the Coburn Room brochure, talking a little bit about the chair, so that when folks come to visit this summer, whether they be locals or tourists, as part of the 12 o'clock tour that the Tourism Department puts on of Victoria Hall, they can learn a little bit about the chair as well. Today's birthday celebration was done in partnership with the Coburg Public Library, and I specifically want to thank Rhonda Perry for her fantastic work. This never would have got off the ground without her help and support at the library. The Children's Department does great things there, and has a wonderful contact list with volunteers who helped make today a wonderful event. We had activities on children's toys and games, a paddle carver, a printer, a tour of the art gallery, and then when we finished here at Victoria Hall, 120 kids walked up King Street and went and did a tour at St. Peter's Church. They had music, their lunch boxes that they brought with them, and a piece of cake. And if you could see this massive slab cake vanish, and there was six pieces that were left to come back to the Planning Department staff here this afternoon, which of course then they all got ate there. Your worship, I really want to thank Coburg Council for their support in supporting Rob Washburn and myself in the role of James Coburn, and how wonderful it was to be 198 today. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, thank you very much. And we, as council, want to thank you for everything you and Rob Washburn are doing to, you know, to educate people on the importance of this very historic figure for Coburg. Very important person in Coburg, one of the most important, and obviously being the first Speaker of the House is a significant kind of accomplishment. So I think you inspired them all today. There was, the Victoria Hall was just abuzz with excitement, and I'd like to think it was because of what you were doing, not because they were out of the classroom. And I did get an opportunity to meet with some of them. As a matter of fact, the class from Burnham School asked me if I would pose with them and have their picture taken, which I did.
That's fantastic.
And then, of course, they all had little workbooks with them with reference into some of the things they saw, the James Coburn Room, the 198th Birthday, the printer, and so on. So I ended up signing, I think about 35 books. And, well, I felt like, I felt like Wayne Gretzky, so. So, Rob, it was an exciting day here in Victoria Hall, and we owe a lot of that to you. So thank you again. And I'm going to open up to any other members of council who'd like to make a comment. Counselor Rowden.
Thank you, worship. Just a quick question there, Rob. And on the chair, you were saying that you can't sit in it, you've got to sit around it. Is there a reason for that? Or, I mean, we're proud of what you do and everything, but I'd like to see a picture of you in it.
Your worship, the federal government was very clear on the limitations that we can do with this particular artifact. One of the reasons that they are so particular about it, it is one of the only pieces of furniture that exists from Confederation period from 1867, because at the end of James's tenure as Speaker of the House, it was granted to him, and he took it home with him, basically. So much of the House of Commons was destroyed in the fire of 1916, that there's almost nothing left of Confederation era. And so the federal government, and particularly the curator of the House of Commons, is very particular on what pieces went out. Fortunately, because of the work that they're doing in Ottawa this year with some construction that the chair was available, and we're so pleased to have it here in Coburg.
And again, I would think there'd be a lot of people who would want their picture taken in it, or so you don't have to really guard it with your life, no doubt in my mind.
As long as they don't mind standing beside it with me, then I would love to have my picture taken with them.
Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This is always a wonderful event that you give context for the school students. Were you by any chance in attendance when they went to the art gallery today, or were you, you did your part and they did their part?
Unfortunately, I was in the Coburn Room, and I was one of the five stations. So every 15 minutes, I had a different group of 25 students come through, and I didn't get a chance to see them up in the art gallery. I know that they went up to learn a little about the current exhibition that they have on, about the residential schools, and what beautiful, vibrant art that the First Nations has as, again, part of their history story that is currently being told in the art gallery.
And that was the point I was going to make, is that it's not always that when February 13th comes, the gallery's worth a visit no matter what's in it, but it just turns out it has a very deep Canadian story that began a few weeks ago. So I'm sure Counselor Saygan will give some feedback in her report next week to see, because those are big concepts. Speaker of the House, truth and reconciliation, what an education. So, thank you.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Well, again, thank you, Rob, for all the support you provide us in, you know, spreading the word about James Coburn. Much appreciated.
Thank you, your worship.
You do an excellent job.
Your worship, our second presentation this evening is from Northumberland County, CAO Jennifer Moore, and Director of Finance Treasurer Glenn Dees regarding the county 2016 accomplishments, 2017 priorities, and budget highlights.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening. As we usually do this evening, we're here to go over some of the highlights of what we did at the county in 2016, as well as talk a little bit about what our plans are for 2017. We try and get out to each one of our member municipalities at least once a year, and usually about this time, right after budget approval. So we will go through a number of slides and talk about, again, 2016, as well as where we're going. So we'll start off, as I mentioned, I think I've already gone through our outline. A reminder about our strategic plan. It was approved in 2015, and it is for the four-year term of council. It included our mission and our vision and our core values as we move forward. Most importantly, you'll see the four strategic pillars that we have, and that's the way we will speak to all of our accomplishments. As we put together the budget, as we decide on what our direction is each year, we do that in the context of what are our pillars. And if it doesn't fit in one of those pillars, we really look back and we ask ourselves, why are we taking on this initiative? So just as a quick reminder, before I get into the details, I'll talk a little bit about what we do at the county, just as a very, very quick overview and hitting on some of the highlights. You might remember, we have over 500 kilometers of arterial roadways. We have over 112 bridges and structures. We operate the Golden Plough Lodge Long Term Care Home here in Coburg. It's 151 beds. We respond to over 20,000 paramedic calls annually, and that volume is going up by about 6% a year. We have a 5,500 acre forest. We operate one open landfill and three transfer stations. We also monitor six closed landfills. We have a recycling plant and the waste collections operations. We have our economic development and tourism, including the Business Advisory Center and the Ontario Agrofood Venture Center. We have POA, so if you get a speeding ticket, we happily take your money. We operate 344 social housing units, as well as over 500 nonprofit units of affordable housing that we fund. We have the, we operate the Ontario Works Employment Services and Children's Services Programs, and then we have all of the support services that help each one of those programs operate efficiently through the year. So back to the strategic plan, we have our four strategic pillars: prosperity, sustainability, community, and excellence. So this slide here, when I'm doing the presentation for staff, we quiz them and ask them if they know what this is. I'll tell you, it's from our competition that we had last year from the Prosperant Northumberland, an initiative that was to promote Northumberland, promote business here. And we had a photo contest, and this was one of the winning photos, a great shot of the agriculture and rural nature of our community. So as we go through the presentation, there's a combination of some photos, as well as some words. Here you can see the Ontario Agrofood Venture Center along the top, and some of the activities that are going on there. The facility, as you'll hear more in a presentation later on this evening, is really helping food entrepreneurs and farmers to create that secondary source of income. This year, as it's got up and running, we've seen a wide range of products, from salsa and toothpicks to sweet potato soup, and pelletizing hops and ketchup, barbecue sauce, freezing and chopping and washing, an assortment of vegetables, and so on. So we're really starting to see activity in that center pick up, and it contribute to what our local businesses are able to do. Down in the bottom, on the left, you can see our first citizenship ceremony took place. It was in Port Hope, and there were 42 individuals that were sworn in as new Canadian citizens last year. It was a very exciting event to see that. Lots of emotion. There was a lady sitting right ahead of me, dressed all in red and white, and she cried throughout the entire ceremony. She was so proud to become a Canadian. So really nice to be part of that, especially for those of us that were born in Canada and have never taken that oath or seen others do that. So it was really quite a moving event in many ways. On the bottom right, a big initiative was launched around the E3 program, and this is getting the youth more involved in entrepreneurship and bringing, helping to develop their skills. We hear a lot about our aging demographic and the outflow of youth, and starting to get them involved in entrepreneurship early on really helps them to see ways that they can come back to the community and come home and have a great career here. I think I've talked to most of the initiatives here on the slide listed under our accomplishments. Again, the Faster Forward Program is another initiative through the Business Advisory Center. I really focused on our entrepreneurs, looking at ways that we can help them to develop skills, to make their businesses successful, to grow their businesses, and that's where we really are seeing the growth and increase in jobs here. So a lot of resources go to making sure they have the skills that they need to be successful. We have a couple of pictures here around sustainability. This is talking mainly about infrastructure. The picture on the top is not a big crater. We didn't have anything land there. It is a work that's been going on at the Brighton landfill. We're just finishing it up now. It is a new cell development. It's, I won't talk in the engineering terms, they will probably, they probably have my head if I were to explain it this way to them, but we dig a big hole in the ground, and then we line it with plastic and fill it with garbage. There's a lot more to it than that. There's many layers of aggregate and different types of materials and textile that they lay down to make that successful. But basically, it is an excavated hole in the ground, and the plastic is there to capture the leachate, so that we can get all of that material. It actually then gets processed through the sewage treatment plant. Actually, here in Coburg, we have that arrangement made, so that it's not leaching into the ground like it did with the previous cell, previous parts of the landfill where it was natural attenuation. So we have a couple more cells to build after this one, but this particular cell is just being finished up now. On the bottom, a new Coburn Emergency Services Base was built. This is co-locating the Coburn Fire Department and our EMS base. They have, it's one building, each with their separate garage areas, and some shared space in the middle for meeting rooms, washroom locker rooms, that sort of thing, as well as the office space. So you can see a bit of a picture of what it looks like inside as well. Fortunately, it was a gray day when we took that picture, but everybody got in there as of January, so construction happened through all of last year. Along the same vein, most of our EMS bases were not appropriate sites when they were downloaded from the province around 2001, so we have been slowly moving to find sites that meet their needs. And as I mentioned, with call volumes going up every year, particularly with the aging population, getting them into the right facility is important. So we're working on Roseney Services. We started planning for that in 2016, and we hope that we will be under construction in another few months. We did the CNR CPR Bridge, which I'm assuming folks here are familiar with that work that lasted all last summer. That was our largest roads project in 2016. 139 kilometers of surface treatment, that was what was done with the county staff. Over 100 kilometers of that was member municipal roads, with the balance being county roads. We rehabilitated, we paved about 12 kilometers of county roads, and that's a fairly typical year for us. When we look at the MRF, we did, a new line was implemented in 2015. So by last year, we had everything fine tuned, and were able to get the final stats on how that was going. With the new material, it was an optical sorting line. That helped us to divert more materials away from landfill. Everything that we recover, of course, frees up more space at the landfill. It also means that we can get more revenue, because we're able to sell it. And then you can see here the stat, we were able to divert the equivalent of over 24 million 500 milliliter water bottles. They did a great media launch of that and showed what that would look like in some great big bales of plastic. And we also did the Eagleson Landfill Remediation. I think folks here are probably familiar with the Eagleson landfill. It was the former Coburg landfill site. In that case, we diverted a creek and filled in the old creek bed, so that the water was running clean around that site. It is now complete. They just got the last of the creek bed filled in in December and January, and most of the stream was put through. And you can see here from the pictures what it was like through construction. And now, when the water runs through there, it really does look like it's been there forever. We've been working on the design for the Golden Plough Lodge rebuild. We've mentioned this one in the past. The province is requiring that we rebuild the Golden Plough Lodge and be moved into there, in there prior to January 2025. Again, here in town, if you're familiar with where the current Golden Plough Lodge is, there's a great big empty lot next to it. Looking down towards the Town Water Tower, that's where the new site will be. So we're showing you the lawn right now, but it will be a new 151-bed site, the same as what we have today. We also did, implemented some new technology. When we talk about the RealView with paramedic data, that's really helping us in our dispatch, as well as call analysis and training of staff. We did some consultation around the Transportation Master Plan. That work is now complete with the draft, and we hope that it'll be approved in March at the County Council meeting. We are working on some behind-the-scenes stuff. It's not maybe quite as fancy, but asset management software is being implemented, and of course, vital to continuing to manage our assets effectively. And also some work with the forest around planning, with the Silver Culture Plan being approved, and significant work on our Forest Master Plan, looking to the future and how we maintain that resource and make sure that we are harvesting it responsibly. For looking at some of the community-minded initiatives that and accomplishments, there's two of the artist renderings there of a new affordable housing building, which will be on Monroe Street here in Coburg. The successful proponents proposed this project, and we hope that within a year and a bit, we will have folks living in there. It's 31 units, and it is seniors-focused affordable living. You can also see that there's a couple other snapshots there from our Local Government Week, where again, much like we just heard about the fun of involving the youth in local government and educating them on what we do. We also had a lot of work done in 2016 around the 20,000 Homes Campaign. In particular, we had our Registry Week, and that was intended to go out into the community and to actually make an attempt to count those that are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless. The numbers were actually quite startling. We know there are people living in our community that are truly homeless, and we know that there are many others that are at risk of becoming homeless. We, all that data has now been tabulated, and at Wednesday's County Council meeting will actually be presented to the public, so that they can see the entire picture of what homelessness looks like, as well as some recommendations on how we want to start to work on that. However, we've already started some of those initiatives around homelessness and poverty reduction strategies, and some of that's coming out of provincial initiatives, as well as what the county is doing with our partner agencies. And I think that, I think that covers most of this slide. These are some pictures here from Registry Week, so you can see that when we went out to the community to try and get a better sense of where homelessness is, there was everything from knocking on doors, meetings in churches, meetings where meals were supplied, to hot chocolate days, and attempting to reach those that were truly on the street or out and about in the community. Again, we're also seeing some changes largely being driven by the province around the Best Start Network and the Triple P, the Positive Parenting. Those initiatives are all around changes that are coming forward in children's services. And they did a lot of work through 2016 on how learning happens, and starting to look at redesigning some of those programs that we provide and partner with our various community agencies to do. And then finally, there's the comment around the Food For All Warehouse. We distributed about 1.6 million pounds of food in 2016. Again, it's a good news story that we were distributing a lot. Unfortunately, it also shows that the need in our community continues to increase. A lot of support towards year end, with out front of Victoria Hall here, we had a live broadcast during quite miserable weather, but a nice push at the end of the year to make sure cupboards were full for the Christmas season. We also have done a fair bit of work in looking at the partnerships and collaboration across the various municipalities in the county. A lot of that focused around emergency response, emergency preparedness, first aid training, and CPR training, where we're finding that there's opportunities to partner there. We also had our second annual first responders event. This was quite popular, and that has to do with recognizing those individuals that participated in saving. An individual with a cardiac event, it recognizes everyone from the dispatcher, paramedics, fire, and police, anyone who was involved in that call. And we had some great news for our paramedics. Seven of our medics were awarded the Governor General's Award in the fall. The picture of the snowplow down there on the bottom is part of our Local Government Week, where we took some plows and had a paint the plow event at three local schools, and those are the plows that work in their area. So the kids, after painting them, they got to see all winter long with them out and about in their own community. As I mentioned, a lot of training was done around emergency preparedness, and we also took up some community information events, looking at our operational support vehicle. We had an ambulance that was being decommissioned, and they've outfitted that to do some community outreach, and recognizing the importance of letting members of the community, particularly the kids, see what it's like to be in an ambulance when it's not in a crisis situation. A lot of pictures here, all the ones in the top are from Local Government, are from Take Your Kids to Work Day. Again, a new event for us, and an opportunity to get the youth into the county to learn what we do, and also to look at some of the careers that are available to them. The snapshot in the bottom is from a survey that we did on employee engagement, and we're very pleased to say that we had some great results from the staff, identified some things that we need to work on, but overall, it shows just how dedicated the county staff are to delivering the services that they do. The Golden Plough Lodge received their CARF accreditation, the Commission on Accreditation of Rehabilitation Facilities. They were able to do that with very strong reviews from the evaluators, and it speaks to the quality of the care that's delivered in our Long Term Care Home. I mentioned the employee engagement strategy, and we'll continue to build on that through 2017, as we look at some initiatives there. Also, continuing on with our career development and leadership program, it used to be our succession planning, recognizing that there's a great opportunity to continue to develop our staff and look at opportunities for them to develop within the county in expanded roles. We've also started some training, and that will continue, around developing PTSD prevention strategies with the changing legislation, and a number of behind-the-scenes work around looking at computer upgrades, phone systems, and some of the things that have to happen to help facilitate all the things that we do. So with that, I will turn it over to Glenn to talk a little bit about 2017 priorities and our long-term financial plan.
Jennifer, just before you finish, can, I'm going to ask any members of council if they have any questions on 2016. I think it's really great that you're here doing this presentation. Although there's not a lot of people in the audience tonight, we are live streaming every one of our council meetings, so hopefully there's a number of people watching from home. And I think it's very important that people get educated on all the services the county does provide, because we are under a two-tier system, and it's certainly a lot more efficient for the county to provide some of the more expensive services than each municipality doing so. So I hope it's a good education process for council and members of the public, and I'm sure that people will get a better appreciation for what some of the costs are in what the county manages when Glenn makes his presentation. And you can see, you know, the cost of waste management, for example. So any questions for Jennifer? I'll start with Counselor Rowden.
Thank you, your worship. And Jennifer, thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to publicly thank you for the county itself for supplying us with a snowplow. And I know the people out there wondering why the county snowplows driving around Coburg, but I have to explain it every day almost, and I'm very thankful to be able to have that when our trucks are down, especially when they've got a lot of smoke damage. Appreciate it.
It's nice to see the way that the municipalities do help each other. That mutual aid is always nice.
Other counselors, again?
There it goes. Two questions. One on the Golden Plough Lounge, a lodge, sorry. 151 units, you're basically replacing them with the same number that was in the current facility. What kind of waiting time do seniors have to wait to get in there? Is it a long list, or?
I'm not sure of the length of time at the moment. We are running, typically, there's 70, 80-ish folks on that list. That goes up and down. It really does depend on the need in the community and what's going on. But it's the Community Care Access Center that determines the admissions. So we really don't manage the list. We're simply given the names of those that are next on the list to come into our facility. So they are the ones that would not, that would monitor length of time on a waitlist.
Good. Second question. At landfill, any of us that have ever bought a computer and all that big styrofoam that comes with it, is there any, I guess, source for recycling that? Or is it, I know that's a question that's, it's just such huge amounts of fill that go in their garbage, basically.
Styrofoam is a big challenge. There's been a lot of discussions on styrofoam. There's not many places that will actually take it and turn it into something. So we have limited opportunities to sell it. We also have challenges with quality control. So even where there is an opportunity to sell it, it needs to be very clean. So there's many types of styrofoam. So to separate it is a challenge and we can't really do pickup of the bulky styrofoam. We do have a limited program for some of the commercial styrofoam, but that's very limited. Also, it's not very economical, to be frank, that styrofoam is very big and bulky and to pay trucks to ship that places for what you can get in value on the recycling market, it's hard to deal with that. So styrofoam continues to be a challenge to look at exactly how we treat that. It is very limited and very difficult. Some municipalities attempt to do something with it, but it is, it's very, very hard and very limited places that it can go. There is not many manufacturers that actually can work recycled styrofoam into their processes.
It's too bad, really, because they can squinch up tires and find another use for rubber, but you know, they never seem to find anything for.
Some of the things that we're doing though is there's, we're currently working on a design in 2017 for community recycling stations. So our transfer stations are going to evolve. So there's going to be a lot more bins, there's going to be a lot more opportunity to recycle there. So while it might not get to styrofoam, there's a lot of things that currently we're landfilling that we can have some opportunities to recycle. So in 2016, we started accepting bulky plastics. So your lawn chairs and kids' toys and all those kinds of odd shaped things that you can't put at the curb, we now take those and there is a market, there are people that can process those. So we're starting to accept them. We're doing an evaluation right now of mattresses and looking at the ability to recycle mattresses. So, and the list goes on. So staff are continually monitoring what there's a market for and what we're able to do something with when we can send it out there. And it's a balance. Some things like a mattress, it's not necessarily a cost advantage, but it's so large and bulky that if we can keep it out of the landfill, we manage to divert a substantial amount of space. So they do that evaluation for all different types of products on an ongoing basis. And as we expand the transfer stations into more of a recycling center, then that will have the opportunity for you to go in and put your things into multiple different bins and try and divert that. It'll also be an opportunity to have year-round household hazardous waste and e-waste collection, which right now we can only do during the warmer months because we don't have any heated facilities. So we're working on some things. We might not get styrofoam, but we've got lots of.
Thank you for staying on top of it. Thank you.
Council McCarthy, you were next, and then Council Darling.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Love the topic of waste and long-term care. Top of my list. I ask this every year and I'm going to ask it again. Are you still on target to begin the wet stream in, I think it was 2019?
It is. And actually, we're starting planning for that this year. We anticipate the evaluation of sites and approvals to take about a year or so. We do need a certificate of approval to accept that. We're looking at basically Brighton or the Murph to see which one is the most appropriate site and those are properties we own today. Following that, we'll have to construct the building, which probably won't be an elaborate building, but we have to do this inside. And then our waste contract will expire around 2019 and that's when we would have appropriate trucking facilities to be able to collect it and manage it.
Good to hear. And the other one about Golden Plow, another initiative that I believe you got funding for, which is very helpful with what's going on in long-term care, the incidence of dementia, is you have funding now for behavioral support nurse. And you're right, the quality of care at Golden Plow is wonderful, but this helps staff problem solve behaviors that can interfere with quality of life, which I am really thrilled because of your beds. But that's the other thing. People often think, well, it's an old home. Quality of care is excellent. That's what matters, the relationship. So I was really pleased. And I believe that staffing members starting soon are already started?
I know they were working on it. I'm not sure if they've started yet, but I know Claire has been working on getting that individual in place.
Okay. Council Darling, you're next.
Thank you, Your Worship. Again, I just wanted to congratulate you on the Murph. I think it's fantastic. I love the stuff that helps the environment and I was going to ask the same question that Councilor McCarthy asked because I'm really interested in to see when the wet composting is done, but it's not too far off. Good, thank you.
All right. So thank you, Jennifer, for the update. Oh, Council Burkett, sorry, I missed you.
No problem. It's great to see all the accomplishments. I have been in a lot of these facilities doing work, so I've seen kind of behind the scenes that most people don't get to see. As for the Murph and the emergency bases, do you guys ever give tours to the public or see what's going on and how often do you do those kind of things?
The Murph has an open house annually and it coincides with the week where we do all the big cleanup and everything. We always culminate that week with a big barbecue for the community. And we open up the Murph and we do tours and we also bring a whole bunch of our roads equipment and our paramedics and ambulance and we do a nice event for the community to come out and learn about all those different things. So that happens every April. The paramedic bases, we don't typically open up. However, with the new facility in Colburn, we've said that once we get the landscaping and that sort of stuff in place, probably towards the end of May, when it's a little bit better weather, we will open that facility up to the community for a tour of the new facility.
Thank you. That's great.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Now we'll turn it over to Glenn. Glenn, you're getting to be an old hand at this now. So welcome and go ahead with your financial presentation.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. This is another picture from our Prosper in Northumberland photo contest as well. So we certainly had some excellent photos that were submitted. So I'll touch on a few items, primarily on our long-term financial model as well as our current year budget and some of the items that we have specifically identified within the 2017 budget. So over the past few years, the county's adopted a long-term financial planning framework and primarily this is a tool that we utilize so that when we provide financial information to council for making strategic decisions, they're not looking at the current year budget in isolation. So entering into the 2017 budget cycle, we're presenting the 2017 budget, but we're also presenting a detailed plan for going out a further nine years. So in effect, they're looking at a ten-year model. And primarily, this is to ensure that decisions are, you know, more on the longer term focus and recognizing long-term needs as well as our short-term needs. So we do have some core principles that drive this framework and I'll go through those quickly in the next slide. But primarily, when we look at our long-term financial planning framework, we're trying to ensure that we're also aligned with all the decisions that have been made that focus on the long-term. So we look primarily at our strategic plan and then we also look at some of our master plans that have been adopted by council or about to be adopted. So we look at our transportation master plan, our long-term waste management master plan, our forest silver cultural plan. These are all plans that have major capital items and initiatives identified within them going out over the long-term. So we make sure that all gets captured within our model. As I mentioned, it is a ten-year model that we look at. So we always have current year budget and go out a further nine. And it is a living document that we annually update. So every year, as we enter into a new budgetary cycle, we add another year onto that horizon. So looking at some of the principles that drive our long-term financial planning framework, the key one is our strategic plan and you can see the pillars of our strategic plan here. So certainly when we look at sustainability, where we're talking in our model about ensuring we have sufficient infrastructure in place over the long-term horizon, we're looking at prosperity. So this is our ability to develop assets such that we support an environment for thriving individuals and businesses. We look at community and we're ensuring accessibility, things such as our local housing corporation and ensuring we have affordable, efficient, affordable housing in place. And at excellence, ensuring that we meet all our service level requirements under our strategic plan. So either we're meeting our service level objectives or hopefully in some instances exceeding them as well. Looking at flexibility, really within the model, that's one of the key principles, ensuring that over the long-term, we have flexibility within the model so that we have financial resources going out into the long-term. So an example of that is looking at our reserves so that we can finance some of our capital projects utilizing specific reserves and then hopefully limit the amount of debt that we have to take on. Efficiency, our ability to use funds in ways that provide high levels of service with maximization of efficiencies. Sufficiency, our ability to ensure sufficient resources for service delivery. Transparency, this really is a key one under our framework. And providing that level of detail in a ten-year model really does help with public transparency. And obviously, risk management, when you have a detailed ten-year plan, you are able to identify areas where there are potential risks and hopefully be able to mitigate them as much as possible. So at the start of our budgetary process and under our long-term financial planning framework, we set a target levy increase to work with. So this is, we enter the budgetary cycle looking at a target for not only the current year budget, but we also embed it within our long-term plan. So we go to council for their direction as to what would be a reasonable target levy increase to look at. We measure this against various indices. So we look at the consumer price index as one measure, but we know that is really representative of a household basket of goods, which in a lot of instances isn't really indicative of the way municipalities spend money, particularly municipalities who provide many capital-intensive services. So we also look at the non-residential building construction index as well when we try to establish a targeted levy rate increase. For this year and in our long-term model, it was set at two percent and council also approved the second year for an annual dedicated infrastructure levy and that target was set at one percent of our 2016 capital. So that can garner some confusion when people hear that. It's not a one percent increase on our levy. It's really a calculation based on one percent of what we spent in capital in the prior year. In our long-term model, recognizing our infrastructure needs, we have that set to increase by a half a percentage point in each year of our long-term plan as well. So a little more on the dedicated infrastructure levy. It did commence in 2016 and it is now embedded in our long-term model going forward. Based on the one percent calculation, we actually came in for 2017 at two hundred and thirty-three thousand, which is higher than the one percent. So included in that two hundred and thirty-three thousand for our dedicated infrastructure levy is forty-eight thousand coming out of a base levy dollars that were reassigned. So our target levy increase was two percent. We came in at one point nine. So staff's recommendation to council was to take the ten basis point differential between the two and the one point nine and allocate that as well into the dedicated infrastructure levy, which brought us to two hundred and thirty-three thousand in total. And the dedicated infrastructure levy does get allocated into a bridge reserve, recognizing some of our larger infrastructure needs for bridges in the horizon. And just to give a little bit of context, you can see the dedicated infrastructure levy over a four-year period in our model. It is actually embedded in for ten, but we're just showing you some numbers here. Even though we have a half percentage point escalation, as I mentioned, it's based on one percent of the prior year capital. So not in all years, it won't go up because it is relative to that capital spending. So looking forward, within our ten-year model, we are primarily trying to ensure that we're addressing some of the long-term challenges, particularly around infrastructure. I mentioned having flexibility within our financial model, so building reserves so that we have the financial resources to be able to finance these projects. And also, again, developing master plans and strategic plans that get embedded within the model and focusing on collaboration as well where we can. So a perfect example is what Jennifer was speaking to with the Crimie Shared Emergency Base where the county has in-house expertise from a project management construction perspective. We're able to manage that process and there's certainly economies of scale for a project that size for construction and then also for ongoing operation of the facility as well. So this really displays our infrastructure deficit. We show this each year. The image on the left, the blue bars that are above the zero line represent the amount that we're underspending on infrastructure in our long-term model. So our asset management plan indicates we should be spending just over twenty-seven million dollars annually on average and we are spending less than that and that's what the blue bars represent above that zero line. The one anomaly that really does stand out is 2021. In that year, we actually spend more than what the asset management plan would indicate and that's because that's the year we rebuild the Golden Plow Lodge facility. Again, 2025, a little bit of a blip going the other way and that's the Trent River Crossing in Campbellford where we build a new bridge in Campbellford. The image on the right, really the same information again, just shown in a different light. The red bars represent the average amount that we should be spending, so that twenty-seven point four. And the blue bars represent the amounts that we anticipate spending in each of those years. Again, 2021 and 2025 being the anomaly years that stand out with those significant capital projects. The other thing that we look at in our long-term financial planning framework is ensuring that our levy increases are consistent and modest over a long period of time. So this image really displays some of the challenges the county had in the late nineties where you can see in some years, there were actually instances where our levy was decreasing and then trying to substantially gain ground in the early two thousands with some significant levy increases. So our model addresses consistency. That's a primary concern. You can see over the past six years where we've been on target with our levy increases for what at the time was two and a half percent. 2017, we reduced it to two percent and you'll see where that dip occurs and how in our long-term model, the green line represents where we're really aligned with that target increase. It does deviate slightly up in some years and that's really relative to the amount that's coming out of the dedicated infrastructure levy in each year. So when we look at our flexibility, primarily we're looking at our ability to have reserves towards financing capital projects as well as what we have for capacity for taking on debt. The image at the top left shows our reserves and you can see they have been increasing and they do continue to increase in our model. This is as we build reserves for specific capital projects such as the Golden Plow Lodge and the Trent River Crossing, as well as trying to build reserves where we need them for contingencies and any unplanned or extraordinary events that can occur. Conversely, the bottom right, we're looking at debt. So this is showing our debt service cost, so the amount that we have to pay out annually towards servicing our debt. The blue portion of the bars is principal and the red portion of the bars represents what we would pay out in interest. The green bar at the top represents the annual repayment limit. This is set for all municipalities by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. We are well below that limit and certainly, and I mentioned this last year, any municipality that was encroaching anywhere close to that limit would really be in dire straits, going out and looking into their future financial model. Their hands would really be tied as far as no capacity for debt and likely in many instances where we're, reserves have been depleted as well. Again, a slight anomaly here where you see our reserves go down in 2021. That's relative to the Golden Plow Lodge rebuild. That's a forty million dollar project we're anticipating. So ten million dollars will come out of a dedicated reserve to build that facility and the remaining funds for financing the thirty million will come from debt. So you can see in 2022, in the subsequent year, where we start taking on those debt service costs as well. So a combination of debt and reserves towards financing that. One other quick comment on financial flexibility. Last year, the county built up our WSIB excess indemnity reserve to such a point that we matched the requirements of an actuarial report. So as a result of that, we were able to self-insure. We have financial resources if there was a catastrophic type WSIB claim. So that resulted in savings of a hundred thousand dollars annually by having those financial resources in place. So looking beyond 2017, this is just to give some highlights into some of the items that we have in our ten-year model, well in excess of a hundred million dollars, really. I'll just touch on a few. Our roads and bridges construction program, that is an annual occurrence between nine and ten million dollars each year. Jennifer touched on the Brighton landfill expansion. That really has been a three-year, multi-year project started in 2016 for nine point eight million. We'll be spending three and a half million in 2017 and then a further three and a half million in 2018. So this year, we'll be moving historic waste from an older portion of the landfill into the newly lined cell and then we'll commence works to start lining the older portion of the landfill as well. The Murph upgrade, so a two-stream recycling system, our composting program, that came up. So we have funds set aside for that to come online to. the landfill as well. The MRF upgrade, so a two-stream recycling system, our composting program, that came up, so we have funds set aside for that to come online 2019. The Roseneath ambulance station, another example of a shared initiative with fire and paramedics being housed in the same facility. Highland Drive remediation, that's a $5 million landfill remediation in Port Hope. GPL, we mentioned, and a waste environmental assessment that will commence this year, about $1.5 million, just to do the environmental assessment alone, and could take up to five So quickly, some of the priorities are capital items that we have identified in 2017. The roads and bridges program, again, that's about $10 million for this year. The Roseneath shared services base, the Brighton landfill, we've discussed. The GPL, even though construction is a ways off, there's a lot of planning and requirements that need to be facilitated ahead of construction. And asset management software is being implemented this year so that we can better manage our assets and ensure that we have a living asset management plan, a living document that we can provide to the various ministries as funding becomes available. And of course, annual equipment, fleet replacement out of our transportation waste paramedics department, our local housing corporation, and various corporate facilities, repairs and maintenance and capital-type projects as well. Every year, we like to show where construction works are going to take place on the county road network to give some visibility to that for roads and bridges, and in this year, a lot of the work will take place primarily on County Road Two. So just to highlight quickly on the actual 2017 budget, the levy increase came in at 2.21%. That's comprised of that base levy increase of 1.9. The dedicated infrastructure levy adds .31 to bring us to a total of 2.21, sorry, after growth. As I mentioned, the 1.9 is less than the target that we had of 2%, and that 10-basis-point differential was allocated into the dedicated infrastructure levy. Growth according to impact is 1.36%, and that brings our total levy to 52.3 million, which is approximately half of the county's revenue sources. So quickly on transparency and then our budgetary control framework, what we like to say is our budgetary process is continuous. Now that council has approved our budget, that really becomes the basis for ongoing reporting and ensuring we have transparency. We do provide for quarterly reporting to council on how our revenues and expenditures are tracking relative to the budget, highlighting any challenges or opportunities as they come to light. On a quarterly basis, we identify where we have variances related to timing or any items that we would consider non-timing or permanent in nature. We also do provide for an annual report. That's the image from 2015 on the right. It's an excellent tool for transparency for the public, showing our financial due diligence. As soon as we have our 2016 audited financial statements, we will commence works and publish a 2016 annual report as well. So it's also an excellent public education tool for the public, as it does discuss all our services and what some of the challenges are that we've encapsulated within our model for a long term. Just a quick image at the bottom-right, financial plan video. This is another excellent source of education for the public. It does, in a very fairly simplistic way, describe how our long-term financial planning framework works, how we budget, the services that we provide, and that's, you know, one of the sources of education to the public. And of course, all our detailed budget documents are also available on the county website as well. So with that, I can open it up for questions.
Well, thank you, Glenn. Another excellent presentation. I do believe it's important that, you know, the public knows that there is a financial plan in place, and it assures some sort of, you know, some sustainability, and we continue to provide services as well as invest in our infrastructure and capital as is required. So very, very important for people to know. So I'm going to open up to members of council who may have some questions, and I'll start with Councilor Darling.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a quick explanation here. I've been always taught that it's not good to pay interest. When you have a, I think on page 31, it's projected to 60 million or somewhere near there in your reserves, yet you're paying interest, rather than pay that interest if you used your reserves and still paid the interest but paid it to yourself. Quick explanation as to why? I mean, I'd just like to try and understand that a little better.
Some of it's a bit of a balancing act, so it's very common for municipalities to use a mix of reserves and debt for larger capital projects, particularly ones that are going to last a long time. So those sort of extraordinary-type ones, such as the Golden Plow Lodge rebuild and the Trent River Crossing, you certainly wouldn't want to use your reserves for just regular fleet maintenance, but that is a good practice. And Infrastructure Ontario actually provides very beneficial rates for municipalities as well. And in a lot of cases, it's also somewhat strategic in nature. So, for example, our paramedic spaces, 50% of our funding comes from the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care, so some of that interest would be covered from the ministries. So it is strategic, and we do have to recognize that. You know, not only do we have to have reserves in place for capital projects, but we also need reserves for some of those contingencies as well. So it is a bit of a balancing act, but our debt service costs are relatively light compared to what a lot of municipalities would do.
Yeah, I can see that. And I know a lot of people ask why we're paying interest when we have money in reserves. A lot of people find it very difficult, and I just wanted a bit of an explanation there as to that it is a strategic plan, and the interest rates from Infrastructure Ontario are quite low.
They are very good.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor Breckinier, and thank you. I'm thinking back to the point made that the needs for emergency response by your paramedics are increasing about 6% each year, and that's somewhat related to the senior demographic. So when I look at your ten-year projects, and this year, Colburn, then Roseneath, Trent Hills, and Brighton ambulance stations, is it that you're actually adding staff when you build these facilities to meet the growing demand, or are the staff spread out in those communities?
There typically isn't staff added, so we look at new shifts when we would add some staff. So in these cases, it's strictly capital and infrastructure-related. For the most part, what happened is when the province downloaded the service, we were often in rented spaces or spaces where we were co-located. So for example, in Colburn, we were in the fire station. We had one ambulance parked inside, but they only were able to give us one bay to park an ambulance in. So that meant that a second ambulance, because if we have 24-hour shifts, we need an ambulance available when the second shift comes in, in case the first shift is out on a call. So leaving an ambulance outside plugged in isn't exactly, it's not ideal, because that ambulance needs to stay at a certain temperature, otherwise the medications and things onboard will freeze. So in most of these cases, we simply don't have appropriate infrastructure to park our equipment in, and we haven't added shifts equivalently. It's been a couple of years since we've added an additional shift. We are appropriately staffed. It's mainly getting all of our equipment inside where it needs to be.
Okay, Councilors, again.
Glenn, this is for you. You mentioned, I was looking at your graph and what happened in the late 90s, and with the possibility of a change in government provincially next year, do you anticipate any similar types of downloading for social services and affordable housing? Or have you talked to any of our provincial representatives?
There won't be further downloads. Ontario Works is being uploaded back to the province.
They have been. I'm just hoping for not a reversal of what's happened for the last 10 years.
No, that's a little hard to predict, but I don't think so. And we certainly don't, the only thing we've embedded in our model is the upload of court security costs and the Ontario Works program.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Glenn or Jennifer? Seeing none, then again, thank you very much, both of you, for your presentations and very valuable information for us and the public.
Thank you.
Your Worship, the next presentation this evening is, again, from Jennifer and also Economic Development and Tourism Director Dan Borwick from Northumberland County with the draft Integrated Economic Development Master Plan.
Welcome, Dan. Economic development is a very hot topic. I know that there are many, many people, not just council, but many members of the public that are interested in economic development and tourism, so I think, again, this is a great opportunity for you to tell people, you know, what the county's doing in this field.
Thank you, and to council, thank you for the opportunity. The slide presentation should give you some oversight or some indication as to what the master plan is all about. I'll get that. Just some background. Important to keep in context that this is an Integrated Economic Development Master Plan, and what's meant by that. It's one that is intended to bolster the local economy, ensures the community's continued vibrancy. The symbolism that we chose to try and illustrate how this plan might work is the Anakshuk, and it graces the cover of this document, primarily because it demonstrates the requisite stability, where strength and balance reside on the interconnectedness of its parts. And as we go through this presentation, I'll try and give you some indication as to how integrated economic development currently is. Just as a bit of background in terms of operating environment, what you see in front of you are the latest growth projections provided by the Ministry of Finance for the province. And you'll note that they've given an indication as to what the projected population growth will be through the various counties. If we can concentrate on southern Ontario, the darkest blue, which you see there, which is an over 40% growth, adjacent to it is Northumberland, and Northumberland is indicated as one of those counties that has a projected growth of somewhere between 15 and 40%. The latest census figures, which were released last Wednesday, indicated that Northumberland's growth over the last five years has been just a little over 5% in terms of population growth. So based on these projections, which are stretched out over the next 24 years, you're probably looking at a population base that's well over 100,000 people. And I guess one of the points to take from this is that population growth will certainly not only be the seniors' growth in the area, but based on a number of other indicators that would indicate, that would suggest that with the completion of Highway 407, with Northumberland being primarily a gateway into eastern Ontario, and the sort of fullness of growth that exists both north and west of Toronto, we become potentially the next logical choice for economic and community investment. If we take that into consideration, one of the things we tried to do in shaping this particular integrated strategy was to try and put some success criteria around what are the major success criteria that would drive an integrated plan. And there, as you can see, there are a list of about eight items here. These eight items include a focused and robust sense of entrepreneurship or can-do attitude. And most importantly, what comes from that is trying to create the right environment which supports that. In order to make that work, research and policy engagement, especially anticipating and understanding goals, becomes a critical feature. One of the successes of the department to date has always been that in any of the initiatives that we've undertaken, we've always used research to impact policy. If you impact policy, policy creates programs, and ultimately, the programs that are created result in dollars. And so that approach has been sort of a mainstay in not only how this plan has been shaped, but if you take a historical look at some of the activities that Northumberland is engaged in, whether it's been rural internet activity based on the first broadband gap analysis, which led to the current EORN structure, to the formation of the Eastern Ontario Development Program, and subsequently, the formation of the Provincial Eastern Ontario Development Fund, all of that was based on research which supported an adjustment to policy. When we talk about flexible social infrastructure and supporting physical and emotional needs, what we're talking about here is the fact that essentially, everyone and everyone in this room, in one form or another, is in economic development, whether it's the public sector, the private sector, whether it's the faith community, whether it's the service clubs, we're all indicative of the type of community we want, and the type of cooperation that exists between those various groups drives the economic development agenda. When we talk about resilient economic activity for dollars and goods and services, what we hope to obtain there is the building up of both human and social capital, which sets the tone for community as a whole. We've all realized that a skilled and diverse workforce is essential in order to attract investment in community. What that means in this era is that productivity, we take productivity over increased number of jobs. You'll find for those existing manufacturers that are currently housed in Colberg or throughout Northumberland County, the increase in productivity is not related to an increase in jobs, but rather, it's reversed. We become more and more productive, more and more innovative, and more and more lean, which results in more, less jobs, but essentially, jobs that represent a more higher skill factor or a higher pay factor. When we talk about connective infrastructure, it's services for day-to-day living, it's very much about the support within an economic development plan that continues to support public amenities and the renewal of communities as we go forward. Livability and quality of life, believe it or not, is one of the main qualities that attract individuals to a location like Northumberland. The amenities that we have, the livability, the actual quality of life, goes beyond just the senior citizen element, but it has a significant impact on trying to attract new business and the type of lifestyle we offer. And finally, the very last point, sometimes it's just serendipity that all of this happens. Things do eventually come together when you need it to. And if you live by a vision, which is the county vision, of bringing together people, partnerships, and possibilities for a strong and vibrant Northumberland, you have to have a little faith in serendipity. The Ontario Agri-Food Venture Centre is probably a good illustrator of that. You know, as we began the work that led to that, it was very, very timely that both the province in particular had decided to make a significant investment in the local food fund and suggest that local food will be a mainstay. So how did we come to put this particular master plan together? Well, a significant amount of supporting research has taken place. We did community stakeholder engagement. These community stakeholder sessions consisted of six sessions, one for each of the portfolios within the department, which drew some 100 participants. And more importantly, over the course of the last three to four years, a significant number of research backgrounders were in place. Some of you will remember the premier-ranked Tourism Destination Project, which came out in 2009, which was an extensive research project taken over an 18-month period to determine tourism resource and tourism growth opportunities. The regional local food business retention and expansion project was, ended up being the largest one undertaken by the province, led by Northumberland. That project in unto itself provided the background for the building of the Ontario Agri-Food Venture Centre. The Northumberland Employment Land Study was the precursor of the Northumberland County Official Plan, and the Northumberland Immigration Portal became a key element in terms of trying to create not only diversity in Northumberland, but by the same token, create an opportunity to attract new Canadians, both as employees and potential employers. So structure. Currently, the department has become a, very much a strategically-integrated collection of portfolios, focusing on a number of sectors, services, and projects with county-wide implications. And under its current umbrella, economic development consists of land use planning and inspection services, business immigration, small business and entrepreneurship, tourism, both not only in the form of marketing, but in tourism development and investment, agriculture and food, and manufacturing attraction and retention. So with each and every one of those, the intended outcomes are, goals for each one of those portfolios is evident within the larger report itself. The intended outcome of this activity over the long run is certainly to create economic growth and vitality, to spur business employment, business and employment growth through increased not only domestic investment but foreign investment, to generate wealth and prosperity, to strengthen quality of life, and to increase, most importantly, assessment and tax revenue. To create a positive business climate of business experiences, to create positive business profile and county image as an investment location, and most importantly, throughout all the intended incomes, as some way to monitor and measure the economic performance and results, so that the resident and taxpayer recognizes that what they are doing by contributing to economic development has some return. So the key performance indicators to try and determine these outcomes as measurable items, consideration will be given to Northumberland's overall economic growth, employment and tourism numbers, new employers moving to Northumberland, the number of residents living and working in Northumberland, increases in the non-residential tax base, in particular because agriculture and agri-food is such a large component. because agriculture and agri-food is such a large component, the number of people working in agri-food businesses, and foreign investment leads and prospects, of which there are considerable number at this point in time. And, supported by the master plan, is support for business attraction, retention, and expansion, and to attract not only industrial and commercial, but also institutional investment, to support the startup and growth of small businesses. And as a, maybe as a numeric indicator, last year, the Business Advisory Centre of Northumberland entertained nearly seventeen hundred inquiries, followed by some four hundred consultations of individuals looking to become entrepreneurs within Northumberland. In fact, it has broadened its suite now to also include the Ontario Agri-Food Venture Centre, where food entrepreneurs are becoming a considerable component of that. That entrepreneurship also in turn fosters research, commercialization, and innovation, which builds a great number of our educational partnerships that we are currently engaged in, whether it be with Durham, Fleming, and/or Loyalist. And finally, to continue to increase Northumberland's domestic and international profile through strategic marketing and promotion and strategic partnerships. So the recommendations that you'll find in the plan, in the integrated plan, speak to these six items. Enhanced shared services, partnership development, the creation of or the investment in a business hub framework, so that more and more we can rely on a type of incubation accelerator model that supports ongoing activity, and most importantly, is probably one of the best ways to engage and retain youth. To branding, and just a quick comment on branding. The concept here about branding is to align economic development and community goals which support quality of service and result in branding being synonymous with quality. Branding in our mind, it's not about the logo, it's the quality of service that goes with the activities that take place within economic development. So in other words, Northumberland becomes the best place to do business. Because if it's the best place to do business, it will attract more business. Innovation-driven, it's very, very difficult to determine exactly what innovation is, or give a specific name to it. Most people equate innovation with software and technology alone. Most of the work that's been done in Eastern Ontario to try and provide an overall look at what innovation really means. It also means innovative practices. It means looking very, very hard at agri-food, which is probably one of the largest innovators within the province, and all the opportunities that are associated with that, with respect to both the physical assets we currently have, and what a huge part of the economic base it constitutes. And finally, clarity of message. It's important that we constantly inform and engage our stakeholders so that they understand what we're doing, as opposed to trying to guess what we might be doing, and that this message resonates with the other components of the plan as a whole. And finally, you'll find in the latter part of the action, the integrated master plan, and I apologize because this needs to be a pull-out more than it needs to be a PowerPoint slide. What we've done here is we've used the eight success criteria items that were, that opened this presentation, beginning with a focused and robust entrepreneurship and going all the way down to serendipity, and put them in a matrix with the six portfolios. And within each one of those portfolios, if we look at agriculture and food as an example, and when we talk about focused and robust entrepreneurship, the role of the agriculture and food portfolio is to increase awareness of local agriculture jobs and agri-food entrepreneurship, to demonstrate the socioeconomic impact of agriculture, assist in the creation of new ag policies and research, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so what we've tried to do is create a cross linkage between success criteria and every portfolio within economic development. And it's interesting, those items within each and every portfolio is the result of those community consultations and the research that's been done. It's not an arbitrary selection point based on the individual managers and/or the department as a whole, but rather, those are the inputs we received from the public consultations we took part in. So in all, what this action plan is, what the integrated master plan is based on, is to create sort of, is to create a framework by which, over the long run, we have some direction and focus for economic development, and also encourage the type of cooperative and collaborative effort that will drive economic renewal within the county. So that's the lofty vision of this. From this will come business plans and specific action plans. As you can see, it's, if, from a content perspective within the plan itself, there's an exceptional amount of detail with each and every department, or each and every portfolio, rather, that speaks to the activities that they are currently engaged in, the ones that they hope to be engaged in, and how they will shape that. So I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to give you an overview of this, and I'd be more than happy to address any questions you might have. I'll get the lights.
Okay, Dan, thank you. So, you know, we've heard tonight that there's master plans for transportation, master plans for long-term waste management, master plans for the forest, and I think it's one only appropriate that we have a master plan for economic development and tourism, which I think, as I said, there's a lot of interest in that. So it's important that people understand that there is a focus and a purpose to what they're doing at the county. So I appreciate you sharing that with us, and I'm going to open it up to members of council, and may have some questions. I'm going to start with councillors again.
Dan, I'm really happy to hear that the Business Advisory Centre has, would you say, seventeen hundred inquiries and four hundred consultations. That's super news. In your research, how much does small business really is a factor for generating not only new businesses, but new job creation? You mentioned innovation sometimes results in productivity, less jobs, but is small business still the biggest, or as big a driver as it used to be for, especially a place like Northumberland?
It's certainly the driver for new growth at this point in time. I mean, we're not without manufacturing inquiry and processes that are in place, or inquiries that are in place that are going to the next stage. But from that type of activity within the Business Advisory Centre, and the end result in consultation, and the amount of support individuals receive by coming through the centre, it's significant. Food entrepreneurship is a, food entrepreneurs are probably a really good example. We're into middle of February, and we've got, we've got probably half a dozen food entrepreneurs who are in, you know, product, not only product development, but product production. One of them just came to us, whose whole basis for their business is hot sauces, he's got some creative names, and his hot sauces just took fourteen awards, had a national food show in New York City, of which ten were first-place finishes. So, I mean, it's amazing what support does to drive that entrepreneurial effort, and what that means to those small entrepreneurs. It means the creation of one job or one point five jobs in the first year, and maybe a doubling of that by year or two. And those are the kind of statistics that we're trying to roll up at this point in time, in terms of giving community some sense of how large an investment that is, and what a great return it is.
Great, thank you.
And just for the benefit of council as well, the Business Advisory Centre is funded through the province, so it is not, it's not a levy-dependent entity. What it does is we provide some of the, some of the basic infrastructure for location and support, but the province has been very generous, and in point of fact, the province has tagged Business Advisory Centre of Northumberland as being one of the more progressive ones in the province, which has resulted in some considerable additional funding to provide some granting opportunities for new business startups that gets them off the ground. So it's a real tribute to the team that makes that portfolio work.
Council McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I found this really important document, because what I'm seeing, and I've watched, now that I've been in this community ten years, and the last two on council, is it's strategic, it's focused, and it also requires a certain discipline. Because I am sure that a lot of people come to you and say, "Well, wait a minute, you should be funding this, you should be funding that." And I guess the other point I want to make is, although I speak a lot at the table about seniors, in fact, that demographic's going to move through, and what I see here is developing the groundwork for families to move here and create economic sustainability, which is actually what's going to help with Northumberland. So in fact, you have to look ten, fifteen years down the road and not focus on who's here now, but who you're getting ready for. So I really like what I see, and I'm going to ask for a printed copy from somebody to read the matrix more carefully.
Certainly. It's available online, and once again, just to try and get some sense of it to the council, we've done it in this fashion. And I appreciate the comment about being strategic. There isn't anything that we do that is not linked to one of the portfolio, there's a common theme through everything. And so whether it's with our educational partners, or partner-like organizations, or manufacturing and industry associations, we do it because it's not just for the immediate return, it's for the building of relationships that exist over time. So certainly, from the department's perspective, we certainly appreciate the support we receive at the municipal level to continue what we're about to do. You know, last week was Minister's Day, whether it was Glenn Murray talking about the opportunities associated with green, and there are a number of green opportunities that we fall into under some of our current innovation initiatives, to a meeting with a select group of mayors Wednesday morning in Toronto with Minister Laura Albanese, who's the Minister of Immigration and, or Citizenship and Immigration for the province. Because Northumberland's been recognized as one of those counties who, in its, in a rural context, one in ten Northumberland residents are first generation. And the work that's been done since late 2012 to build up an interest from new Canadians in coming to Northumberland, about twenty percent of our clients at the Venture Centre are new Canadians, some of them Toronto-based, because they seek opportunities with what we have to push their product back into the city. So it's, none of this is standalone, so it's all strategic.
Okay. Other questions for Dan? Well, Dan, again, thank you, thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Very, very informative, and as a matter of fact, I do have the full copy of the master plan, and for, what I'll do is I'll circuit it to all members of council, that way you won't have to go onto the website and look for it. But it is very, very comprehensive, you'll find it's very, very comprehensive and detailed, and Dan just gave you a quick overview of the content that's in it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your worship, the next item is under the heading of General Government Services. It's a memo from myself regarding the annual repayment limit for the town of Coburg.
Okay, I'm going to pass the General Government Chair over to councillor Darling, in the absence of Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Thank you, your worship. At this time, the action recommended that council receive the report for information purposes, and the county just mentioned there about their ARL, and I wondered if Mr. Davy would give a brief overview of ours at this time.
Sure, sure thing. Mr. Davy would be happy to, he's got it all in his report.
Yes, councillor Darling. The couple of things that I would like to point out on the 2017 annual repayment limit is if you refer to the second page, which is headed Determination of the Annual Debt Repayment Limit, you'll see at the top of that page, and again, keeping in mind, these are our 2015 numbers, but you'll see that the expenditures on total debt charges in 2015 was $3,144,828. And you'll note that of that 2.8 million, or almost ninety percent of that figure was repaying principal, and just slightly over ten percent, or $334,000, was the interest component. So again, I think that's a pretty favorable ratio, anytime you're repaying, almost ninety percent of your payments are going to knocking off, principal off your debt. The bottom half of that page basically just runs through our total revenue in terms of getting down to what they call net revenue of $43 million, and the rate of twenty-five percent of that has been established as a reasonable amount to be using towards paying debt. In the province's eyes, I guess, is where that comes from. And so that leaves you with an estimated annual repayment limit of $7.8 million, which it should be pointed out is in addition to the $3.1 million at the top of the page. So basically, that amount of money on the first page of the report shows, they've provided illustrations that you could, in effect, with a five percent interest rate and a twenty-year amortization, you could borrow $97 million and still be within their annual repayment limit. So again, as was pointed out by the county treasurer, we're well within our borrowing capacity. Again, the main purpose of this annual repayment limit is if we were to ever exceed or approach the level of exceeding that limit, we would have to go to the province for permission to issue additional debt. So it's really just a safety measure to make sure that municipalities don't go too far into debt.
Thank you, Mr. Davy. Any questions? Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, councillor Darling. So I read in the press about Port Hope aiming for a ten percent, to be ten percent of their ARL, and it, I really don't know how that pans out in terms of what we spend on debt, what we'd be allowed to spend based on the twenty-five percent amount. So I was just wondering, how would that kind of calculation be made, and is that, is that a standard or a best practice to aim for, for a municipality?
Mr. Davy?
I really can't answer as to what would be a best practice as far as the percentage of the annual repayment limit. I guess that's something we'd have to research.
I think it was, if you don't mind me follow-up, in view of what Glenn from the county was saying, that if you actually are borrowing close to your limit, it's indicative of you're not in the best shape. So I guess I, well, maybe that's the answer. It's unique to each municipality, and you have to figure out the parameters. Or is that ten percent number appropriate, and how's that calculated? But I understand, you're not, yeah.
Okay. Mayor Brockinere?
If I may, councillor Darling, I think if you, if you take a look at your, the way you budget your own home and your own finances, the best scenario is to have no debt. So there are no payments. And I don't think the municipalities are any different, it's just that we, very few municipalities get to that point.
Councillor McCarthy?
Well, and I appreciate the mayor's comment, because one of the reasons that I understand we go into debt is not because there's no other way to fund this, but in fact, it's to be fair to the taxpayer. Because if we ask the levy, the current populace, to pay for golden plow right out through the levy and use our reserves, we're actually asking the current population to pay for the project right out, when in fact, when we do some of it through debt, we're asking the future population to help pay for that asset. So in fact, I think debt is a fair way to raise funds for projects than the way we all like to live, which is no debt. So I'm, I am comfortable with debt, even though our mantra is no debt. It's a fair practice.
I would agree. Mayor Brockinere?
Yeah, councillor Darling, so again, to councillor McCarthy, so there are some areas where it is wise to have debt, so that you do spread the payments out. When I think of our, you know, when we borrow money for wastewater capital projects, or for water projects, then it's for water projects, then it's only fair that we spread the payments out over a period of time, so that it's not paid for all upfront by the people who are using the services today, but make sure that people who will be using the services in the future will pay off some of that. So you're exactly right, that in the broader scheme of things, for municipalities, there are times when, in fairness to the taxpayer, you do take on debt.
Any other questions? Councillor Segan?
Thank you, councillor Darling. Through you, Mr. Davy. The illustration purposes here on the interest rates, I know that various infrastructure projects come in at a different interest rate. That 5% to 7%, is that kind of an average that the town pays?
Yes, to councillors again. As long as I have seen the annual repayment limit, the illustrative description from the province has been 5% and 7%. For some years now, probably at least the last 10, we've been borrowing at much less than the 5%. So if you were to change that 5% number to 3%, for instance, obviously, the annual repayment, the amount of debt you could borrow would go even higher. So, yeah, they've never changed that format, it's been 5% to 7%.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay, all in favor? Carried.
The next item on the agenda is the memo from Adam Giddings, manager of Regulatory Compliance and Finance, Lakefront Utilities, regarding the proposed 2017 Water Services Capital and Operating Budgets.
Yes, the action here recommended that council approve the 2017 Water Services Capital and Operating Budgets, and at this time, would Mr. Giddings give us a brief explanation?
Sure. I trust everyone had an opportunity to read the memo. I'll go over it quickly, and maybe sort of starting at the bottom, and what we're totally, or what we're approving for total operating costs is $2,598,000, which represents about a 2% increase from 2016 budget. Further to that, our 2016 actual costs, or the 2017 budget represents about a 1.85% increase from our 2016 actual. Also, if council remembers, the 2017 budgeted operating cost figures agrees to what we incorporated in our water rate study that we presented to council in December 2015. It also agrees to the financial plan that we presented to council in January 2016, so all those figures agree. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer, any, anything.
Any questions from council at this time? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Carried.
And the third item under General Government is...
Thank you, Mr. Giddings.
Sir, the third item under General Government is a letter from Autism Ontario regarding Proclamation of World Autism Awareness Day on April 3, 2017.
Yes, the recommendation here is that council proclaim April 3, 2017, as World Autism Awareness Day in the town of Coburg. Any discussion? I think it's pretty straightforward, all in favor? Carried.
Okay, councillor Darling, you keep the chair, or now it's under Parks and Recreation Services?
And the first item is a memo from the Secretary of Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee regarding the naming of the new Amherst Linear Park.
Yes, the action here, that council received the motion from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and respectfully denied the request from New Amherst Limited to name the linear park Willow Park. And further, that the town review the parks naming policy through the public consultation, and develop a list of potential names for future town of Coburg parks. Any discussion? Councillor Rowden?
Yes, councillor Darling, just a quick question on a request by New Amherst. Do we not take some of the recommendations from some of the developers in the past, from the naming of parks, because of the history on them? I know they tried to do that with the streets, and I'm wondering, is parks a separate policy?
To my knowledge, there is a separate policy, and yes, we have in the past, based on history. The discussion at Parks and Rec, that this was the developer who wanted to name it after his grandfather, or pardon me, granddaughter, and Parks and Rec felt that it was maybe a lot more appropriate names out there to do with the history of our town, or geographical in nature. And that's why at that time, we had recommended, that we, the Parks and Rec, had recommended reviewing the policy to make sure that everything was in place. Now, at this time, if I could, I'd ask Director Huswick if he had anything further to add.
It's turning off. The discussion at the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee was also taking into consideration practices regarding street names. And as the chair mentioned, there's a belief that there's a lot of history in the community, a lot of individuals throughout the history of the community that might be better recognized through, whether it's street names that Public Works handles, or parks, rather than simply taking recommendations specifically from developers. So from a staff perspective, we support the recommendation, and would be happy to provide further advice after reviewing the policy, if that's the committee's wish.
Thank you, Mr. Huswick. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor? Carried.
Okay, councillor Row, Public Works.
Yes, your worship, thank you. We have a letter from Denise and Dennis and Linda Guindon regarding the request for an installation of an accessible parking space in front of 480 Burnett Drive in Coburg, and the action recommended that council refer this matter to staff for a further report. I did go up there today, and there's a lot of snow around, and of course, parking on Burnett Drive is pretty limited, and I'm just wondering that with the recommendation that staff would look at this in case there's other people do requests for that same thing, because we're going to have, not only got signs up, but mark the road as well. It's pretty congested in that area. Any questions? All in favor? Carried.
Okay, councillor Burkett, we're all, first, well, there was an item under Protection Services on accessibility, but I believe the action has been deferred to allow the new members of the Accessibility Committee to have comment on it before I come back to council. So we're now into Planning and Development Services. Councillor Burkett, you have the chair.
Okay, we have a memo from the Planning Development Planner One Heritage regarding the Downtown Coburg Vitalization Community Improvement Plan Implementation Plan. The action recommended that council receive the report for information purposes, and further, that council endorse the implementation of the Downtown Coburg Vitalization Community Improvement Plan, CIP, as outlined in the staff report. And I would just ask the Director McLashen, speak to this?
Thank you, councillor Burkett. As you see in your agenda, Alison Torre LaPere, our Heritage Planner, has prepared a detailed report on the implementation plan that we're proposing for 2017 version of the Coburg Downtown Vitalization Community Improvement Plan. As you know, the CIP was adopted by council almost one year ago, under Section 28 of the Planning Act. And it is, of course, just briefly, to provide incentives for private development, to rehabilitate, enhance and restore, and also encourage redevelopment within the downtown core of Coburg. There are a number of programs under the CIP that help provide for grants and loans for redevelopment projects and rehabilitation. And each of these programs can be used, they can be stacked, and used for a variety of purposes. Last year, it's the first year of rollout, we approved five projects, ranging from facade, minor facade restoration and roofing proposals, to major facade restorations, and also residential infill project. The total number of grants and loans equaled approximately $50,000, $55,000 each, and we feel it's very successful in moving forward. Just in the last several months, a subcommittee of the Downtown Coalition was formed to help create an implementation plan for the CIP moving forward. And this subcommittee and staff looked at a number of issues, particularly in terms of the action plan moving forward, are four key areas. First of all, of course, initiating the CIP through a selection process, or a consultant, or sorry, a project selection criteria evaluation. Also, an application intake and approval system, a marketing and communication program, as well as a reporting and monitoring component to the plan. And Alison actually is here. I think what I'll do is ask Alison to maybe come forward and just explain a little bit about the actual implementation plan before we conclude. Alison?
Thank you, Glenn. Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have, as Glenn mentioned, had a subcommittee of the Downtown Coalition and some staff members as well, worked together to develop a comprehensive set of criteria and a procedure for evaluating and prioritizing the projects that we are expecting to receive applications for in the coming year. And that work was done in anticipation of the continuation of this community improvement plan. The criteria are outlined in the report. We have also weighted them in a way that, excuse me, we felt reflected the prioritization of the various goals and objectives of the Downtown Vitalization Initiatives. The most highly-weighted criteria include the leverage of private funds, so that's the grant or loan cost leverage, and that's basically awarding a higher score to projects that leverage more private funds at a lower cost to the town. Also, visual impact was weighted highly, and we have some bonus points in that category. That's in recognition of the public input that was received through the development of the Downtown Vitalization Action Plan, that very strongly indicated a desire from the public to see improvements to the exterior of buildings that are visible from the public realm in downtown Coburg. The next weighted, I guess you could say, the next most significant criterion is the impact on target business attraction. And again, in 2013, through the Downtown Vitalization Action Plan, there was a survey done that identified several target businesses that we would like to see in the downtown area. So we've awarded a higher weight to projects that include those types of uses coming to the downtown. Next is the historical preservation impact, which evaluates the scope of work, the significance on the heritage conservation, where the building is in fact a designated heritage building. Within the CIP study area, there is quite, I would say, definitely a majority of the buildings are designated, however, not all of them are. So that's a criteria that takes that into account. After that, we've looked at two equally-weighted categories. One is for residential square footage, and one is business square footage. And this criteria gives a score based on the percentage of the total gross floor area of the building, that is either residential space or business space being rehabilitated, converted, upgraded, or created. And we also have bonus points available there for new units that aren't already in existence. And then finally, we also have a criterion that looks at the structural integrity impact of a scope of work. And the intention there is to recognize that there is often significant work required to buildings that may not actually be all that visible. It might be more of a structural integrity issue that's being addressed. So that's the final criterion. We did develop several hypothetical applications that took the whole range of potential eligible projects that we may receive applications for, and we ran them through a very detailed formula, and scored them all, and the subcommittee was satisfied that the procedure that we've come up with has given us a way to appropriately prioritize the projects that will then align best with the goals of the Downtown Vitalization Initiatives. Also included in this implementation plan is our intention to, or I guess our timeline for how we are going to actually implement this in the coming year. We're proposing two intake dates in the calendar year, one in the spring and one in the fall. And we've arrived at those dates by looking at the timelines for reviewing the applications, scoring them as a subcommittee and at staff level, and then being able to bring a recommendation forward to committee of the whole, and ultimately to council for a final decision regarding the allocation of funds at points in the year that we felt were most suitable, based on when we received applications this year. So before the Victoria Day holiday in May, and then again, before Labor Day. We found that in the downtown core, many of the building owners and business owners were hesitant to undertake very big facade improvements in the middle of the summer, when there's often special events and so forth. So we felt this gave two opportunities during the year that would still also allow for funds to be allocated well in advance of the budget deliberations for the coming year. And that brings me to my next point, which is the monitoring and reporting. We've separated reporting and monitoring, we've had extensive discussions about this at the Downtown Coalition meetings. Our intention is to monitor the program annually, of course, a report to council annually on the uptake of the program, how many applications we're receiving, what the status of those projects is. Obviously, the ones earlier in the year may have an opportunity to be farther along than the ones allocated in the second intake. But we intend to be able to report to council annually how the criteria are being met. So how many new units have we created? What is the total square footage? The value of these projects? The amount of private funds that is actually being leveraged in the downtown? So separate to that, the CIP itself actually includes recommended program durations, and some of the more comprehensive elements of the CIP. It's a 10-year recommended duration, and some of them are five years. So we are proposing to be evaluating more comprehensively the overall performance of the CIP on a five-year basis. That also allows for the momentum of these projects to really take hold and have an impact on the downtown. So there'll be two elements, the annual reporting, and a more comprehensive program evaluation on a longer time scale. And then the final thing I'll speak to quickly is, of course, we also have a plan for marketing and communicating the program. We want to be able to reach as many of the potential applicants as possible prior to the intake deadlines. We had great uptake this year, in 2016, considering that we didn't have much significant marketing, that we weren't really doing it on a trial basis, with a smaller amount of funds than we do have available in the budget for 2017. However, we'd like to ensure that we reach as many people as possible to get the best applications possible. And we also not just want to communicate to applicants, but we'd like to market it to them as an opportunity to become actively involved in the momentum of downtown vitalization, which we've heard from some of the business owners downtown, they really feel is taking hold. So we're proposing, the communications officer as well, has been involved in the development of a multifaceted communication plan, including municipal ads, website ads. Also, we're intending to do a mail-out directly to the properties within the study area, and reach out to the DBIA, and have some application packages available for people interested as well. As with most comprehensive applications that come to the planning department, we of course have pre-consultation that usually takes place beforehand, so we're hoping to be able to reach as many people as possible and really draw in the best applications this year, in 2017. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Thank you, Alison. Are there any questions from council? Councillor McCarthy?
Yes, thank you, councillor Burkett. Well, you've made our job a lot easier. I am really pleased with this, compared to... I, I am really pleased with this compared to last year, where we're kind of operating without that sense of criterion. My only question is, we have put a hundred thousand in the budget this year. Would you be keeping fifty for the first intake or fifty for later? Or just, let's put it this way, in the first intake, cap it at fifty if all the asks are at that? How, how will that be managed?
We haven't, we don't have a definite approach to that. It's definitely something we've discussed. Our, I don't want to say our gut feeling, but our impression is that we don't necessarily feel it's appropriate to hold back on funds if we get very significant, high-scoring projects at the first intake. So we're not at the outset saying that we're going to only have half the pool available at the start of the year and half at the second of the year, because we'd like to reserve that decision for, or that recommendation to you, based on the applications we actually receive. It also doesn't preclude people from applying at the second intake. So if they've applied at the first intake and not received the funding they applied for, if they choose to wait and apply at the second intake, then we would score them again at that point, too. And any allocation of funds is actually, of course, our recommendation will come forward to council, but the final decision would of course be at this level from council.
Counselor Darling?
Thank you, Counsel Burket. One, just a clarification, we did pass a hundred and fifty thousand this year rather than a hundred? Yeah, okay, just wanted to make sure that I had my numbers correct there. Last year, we, we had five recipients. Did we have more than five applications and turned them down, or did we just have the five?
We just had the five. We had a couple of them who knew that this was sort of likely coming down the pipes, so they waited a little bit. They had their heritage permits in place, and they were ready to go as soon as the funds were available. We, with that five, we had fifty thousand in the budget, and we did go slightly over that. So we sort of evaluated them as they were received.
Okay. Now with the two periods that you can apply, if we do give up all the money in the first period, which I hope we do, and we get applications in the second period, would they be pushed into next year? Or could they be accepted on the basis that there's funding next year?
That's likely a decision that will be above my head and up to you folks. I, I, again, I agree with you. I hope very much that we get projects early in the year that score very highly and that we, as staff, can bring confidently bring forward a recommendation regarding the allocation of funds to support those projects. I, I don't really know how that's going to go. We're also, this is our, our first year really implementing it. The CIP itself includes monitoring variables that we're also looking at, and it does also suggest feedback from the applicants. So that's something we intend to collect, too, is do these intake dates work for you? We don't want to be holding back people from starting work that they'd like to be doing because they have to wait four months or whatever for a decision on funding. So we're learning as well as we go. We're pretty confident that the plan we're bringing forward puts us in a good position. But again, I expect that when we report at the end of the year, we'll have learned a few things and may tweak a few things as well.
Glenn?
Yes, Counselor Darling, similar to 2016, if we were to reach the maximum budget allocation in that first intake, similar to 2016, we would first come to council and, and either present a proposal to council to increase that budget or, you know, hold it at the line. So it'd be certainly council's prerogative to move forward at that point.
Yeah, I would just hate to see that we have more applications come forward and, you know, we, we can't deal with them, but hopefully that'll be a good sign. Thank you.
And likely at our first intake date, if our recommendation is to allocate all the funds, we'll know well in advance if we're going to have anything for the second intake. So we can have that conversation early on.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Seguin?
I just wanted to thank Allison for all your hard work on this, because just, just coming up with the weighting criteria and really listening to what people put into what businesses we need here and, and visual impact and, and how much it'll strengthen the downtown, I think it's an excellent program. And I think it's, obviously, council supported your department by giving you a hundred and fifty thousand. So keep it wise and, and keep up the, the good work. And then we look forward to the monitoring and the follow-up, because it is, it is money that, it's really not ours to spend, it's the taxpayers', and we really hope that it will improve the downtown. But again, thank you for all your work. I know you've worked really hard and long hours at this, and it really works. I see this possibly as a model for other communities to follow down the road. Thanks.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council?
Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. I have a memo from the Secretary of the Coburg Heritage Advisory Committee regarding a heritage permit application for a single-story, ten-unit addition on the north rear of the existing building located at 100 University Avenue East, Victoria Retirement Residence. Action recommended that council endorse the comments from the Coburg Heritage Advisory Committee and grant the heritage permit number HP dash 2017 dash 003 for the property located at 100 University Avenue East, Coburg, Victoria Retirement Residence, for a ten-unit residential addition located at the rear, or north rear of the existing building, subject to finalization of details and conditions by staff. Any questions in regard on this?
This isn't a question, just a comment in regards to this and what we heard earlier tonight. This is a good news story. I would say that one of our retirement residents are expanding, but it's also the economic spin-off that'll be with that. It'll be fairly significant, I would think. So it's a good news story, I think.
Are there any other questions from counselors?
Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Okay, Counselor Seguin, you got your first opportunity to take the chair at committee of the whole.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a letter from Ron Weeb, Downtown Coburg and Lions Club Santa Claus Parade Committee Chair, regarding the disbanding of the Santa Claus Parade Committee. Sad story. Obviously, the action is that the letter be referred to staff or further report. Any discussion? I just wanted to mention that in his letter, he does mention that it does cost about ten thousand dollars to put this parade on. In the last few years, thirty-five hundred has come from the Coburg Downtown BIA and thirty-two hundred from the Coburg Lions Club. It is a tremendous amount of work. I know the community that I'm from prescott, the fire department, put it on every year, and it, it's about that much, ten thousand every year to, to pay for the bands primarily that come in at Christmas time. So I'd look, ask anyone around council what they feel about this. It's, it's a tremendous financial impact, especially after the budget's been passed, to come to council. He'd like council or the town of Coburg to carry this on, so. Any comments from anyone? Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Counselor Seguin. So I will be interested in a, a report from council, but I'd, I'd like to have it considered to, timeline be attached to it, because if there needs to be some community engagement and partnership established, having run the DBIA and worked front lines on Santa Claus Parade, was the year we won the Civic Award, the Lions Club for the Parade, because it is a huge and beloved event. Anyways, they, the, there's a lot of things that have to start well in advance. Booking the bands is the big one. So is it possible through you to, perhaps the Director Huswick, to give a sense of when a report could come back to council? And the sooner the better.
Anything, Director Huswick?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think we could probably in a week prepare some options, but I think what we would likely bring forward is recommendations to engage the community and look for options in terms of how and which groups and which individuals might be able to contribute to this. One thing that we're planning to do at a staff level is to review all of the events that occur in the community on a regular basis and provide some recommendations to council at some point this year on what the municipal role should be on those types of, of events and, and the level of our contribution, because we really have one staff member that contributes enormous resources and time to many, many different events. So the capacity of the organization is really getting stretched. So, you know, we can work fairly quickly to outline some options, but I think in terms of finding a, a solution, it's going to take some time and, and lots of discussions. And that's certainly something we could do at a staff level, is engage in some of those discussions and, and then maybe bring forward more definitive recommendations. So that would take a little bit longer. So it's really up to council on how quickly you would want us to bring forward and how comprehensive the recommendations would be.
Any other questions? Mayor?
Yeah, Chair Seguin, so as far as the three thousand five hundred dollars goes, that's, that's the least of our concerns. You know, we have drawn from contingency, contingency funds in the past for, you know, for, for important projects. I, I think the, the important question is, you know, when we have to make a decision as soon as possible to determine what our involvement would be, as Mr. Huswick had said, so that they can proceed to start with the planning, contacting bands and all the, all the participants that they have to book months in advance. So that's the, that's the important step.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Second item is a memo from the events coordinator regarding the municipal event application for a fifty-five-plus Winter Games, Middle Night Mingle in downtown Coburg. Again, Director Huswick, if you could let us know a little bit what we're going to be seeing at Middle Night Mingle. I guess there's a road closure involved as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is middle night because it's, it's the second evening of the fifty-five-plus games. The intention is to create a, a community event in the downtown area and, and engage local businesses as well, and in particular. So we have eight hundred-plus participants that are coming into the community as part of these games, a tremendous opportunity to showcase the community. So the intention is to get as many of them into the downtown core as possible, but also it's a community event where we're, we're inviting the residents and members of the public to, to join in the festivities. So we, we're working with local restaurants and other establishments to open the doors and host live entertainment and give an opportunity for the participants and locals to go from facility to facility, enjoy the evening. We're also actively working on outdoor activities. There's a wonderful concert that is booked, and we're fine-tuning the, the details in the concert hall in, in this building. We're trying to create a wonderful community, outdoor, indoor event to bring both the residents and the participants together. So there's still more details that we're actively working on, but hopefully there's lots of people watching tonight, and stay tuned. So it's February twenty-second, and it'll be a great opportunity to come downtown, get the DBIA and local businesses involved, and showcase what the community has.
Thank you, Director. So the action recommended is that council approve the road closure of King Street from Division Street to George Street on Wednesday, February twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen, between 5:30 PM and 10:30 PM for the fifty-five-plus Winter Games Middle Night Mingle event. Any questions? I get all the hard ones. All in favor? Carried.
Your Worship, the items of unfinished business are listed in the agenda, and there is a closed session this evening.
Okay, just before I call for adjournment, I do have one item to bring up, and, and that relates to the council meet, the regular council meeting next Tuesday. Monday is Family Day. We know that we have the opening for the fifty-five-plus games happening at seven PM next Tuesday. We have the Lieutenant Governor visiting in the afternoon for a roundtable discussion and then a bit of a social afterwards. So I guess my question to council is, if you would prefer to be at the opening, then we will delay the council meeting until eight o'clock. If you would sooner start the meeting at seven o'clock, all attend the opening, and the Deputy Mayor will start the, the council meeting until I show up. So what's the preference of council? Would you, do you want to attend the opening ceremonies? Or do you want to? Okay, so the consensus is yes? So carried. All right, then I'll all talk to Kara about getting the, the press release out that the council meeting next Tuesday will start at eight PM. Mr. Huswick?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the opening ceremony, I believe, begins at seven-thirty, and they're scheduled to, to go till about nine o'clock, I believe.
Well, if you could add a little more detail to that, maybe, you know, maybe we should be, I don't know, maybe we should be doing whatever we have to do in the first hour. Is, is that possible?
Well, I, absolutely. I think, I'm not sure exactly when in the schedule your involvement is, but I mean, I believe the rest of council would, would certainly be free to, to leave and start council, whatever time you choose.
Well, I guess we can play it by ear, so. If, if I'm required to stay longer, I will, but if not, I'll be here with the, I'll be leaving at the same time as the rest of council. And as, speaking of communications, I'm sure Kara would like some input.
So there are a number of performances planned, starting at seven o'clock. The actual speakers won't begin until seven-thirty, so it's likely going to carry into no earlier than eight-thirty, when you would be able to exit the stage and make your way back to council.
Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor Brockner. Is it possible to consider, because we're being flexible with the time, and I don't know other people's schedules, but could we have a four o'clock council meeting?
No, we have events taking place prior to the... We can move it to the next week? We can skip a week? That would make, that would make more sense. CAO Peacock?
With the schedule having that one week empty anyways, it should be no problem to schedule on.
All right, I think that's, that seems to be the consensus, that we will skip a council meeting next week and hold the follow, the regular council meeting the following Monday. And then the Monday after that will be committee of the whole again, so, just to keep everything in order. Okay? That seems to be the consensus of council, so I'm calling for an adjournment. Counselor Roud. I forgot we have a closed session. Go ahead, Counsel Darling.
Yes, Your Worship, the action recommended that council meet in closed sessions in accordance with Section 239 of the Municipal Act SO 2001 regarding personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, and this one's to deal with a municipal ombudsman's report.
Okay. All in favor? Carried. Now adjournment. Counselor Roud.